I'd like to begin by acknowledgement of country. Mount Isa City Council acknowledges the Kalkadune and Injilingi people, traditional custodians of the land on which we meet today and pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging. We extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. Please note this ordinary meeting of Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. For the prayer, we have Father Will Brennan with us today from the Good Shepherd Parish. It's his first time and I'd like to make him really welcome. So, welcome and thanks for the prayer.
Thank you very much. And thank you for inviting me to pray with everyone here this morning. I'd like to share a Bible reading I'm sure we've all heard before. A man asked Jesus, "Who is my neighbour?" Jesus replied, "A man was going down from Jerusalem to Jericho and fell into the hands of robbers who stripped him, beat him and went away, leaving him half-dead. Now, by chance, a priest was going down that road and when he saw him, he passed on the other side. So likewise, a Levite, when he came to the place and saw him, passed by on the other side. But a Samaritan, while travelling, came near him and when he saw him, he was moved with pity. He went to him and bandaged his wounds, having poured oil and wine on them. Then he put him on his own animal, brought him to an inn and took care of him. The next day, he took out two dinari and gave them to the innkeeper and said, 'Take care of him and when I come back, I will repay you whatever more you spend.' Which of these three do you think was a neighbour to the man who fell into the hands of robbers? He said, 'The one who showed him mercy.' Jesus said to him, 'Go and do likewise.'" I've chosen this passage as a reminder that we're all called to be brothers and sisters to each other, especially in this time where division is so easily found. We can get caught up on all sorts of labels we place on ourselves and on others, whether they're political and ideological in this election time, or religious, cultural ones or any other labels. But this parable of the Good Shepherd invites us to see others as fellow human beings. The Samaritan didn't have much in common with the traveller. They were from different religions, cultures, worldviews and pretty much any other label we could put on them. But the Samaritan recognised the fellow traveller on our human journey. Everyone we encounter is sharing this journey with each and every one of us. So let us ask ourselves, how can I be a neighbour to that person? So let us pause and pray. We pray for this council meeting here today and for all the people who live in Mount Isa City Council, for hope and a positive vision for the future. We pray for all those who work for Mount Isa City Council, for safety and enjoyment in what they do each day. We pray for peace in our world, especially all those who have lost so much because of war. We pray for those who have a small voice in our community, that we can encourage them to be able to work well together. And we pray for all of us here today, that we may be brothers and sisters to all who need us. And to conclude, I invite you to share if you're comfortable in saying the Lord's Prayer together. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Name the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Father Will. That was a very appropriate reading for this time. So thank you for joining us today. Item number three calls for apologies or leaves of absence. Clearly, everyone's here in attendance today, so no need for that.
Madam Mayor, could it just be noted that I will need to leave the meeting today at 10:15 to go to... I'm late for a course. So I'll have to leave the meeting at 10:15.
Okay, thank you. Public participation. So today we have our Casual for a Cause donation. As everyone knows, on Friday, our staff dress in casual clothes and make a gold coin donation and then they get to decide which charity around town they get to donate the money to. So I'd like to call up Evelyn and Glen Charles from the Salvation Army. And the staff have raised $162.
We do this for the livestream. So today I'd like to thank our staff and those that participated in Casual for a Cause for donating $162.45 to the Salvation Army. So I see these guys, Evelyn and Glen, everywhere I go. They're at so many different community events and real supporters of our community in our city. So I'd like to give them the opportunity to tell everyone what they actually do when they're out and about.
All right. So as we go out and about, we spend time with our community. That's what we do. We are Christians first and foremost, but along with that, we also... When Glen and I came up here, we came up here to love the people, to love our community and just to... Through not only our words and teaching, but also with our actions, we do exactly what Will was trying to say, what Will was saying before, that we love those around us and we care for those around us. And so, yeah, especially because tomorrow is the beginning of May and so it's the start of our big signature fundraiser, which is the Red Shield Appeal, which is what funds all of our community service work. And so, yeah, at this time of year, we definitely... All funds are greatly received and they all go directly... Well, what's donated in Mount Isa stays in Mount Isa. And it's all, it's in one hand and out the other.
So I know you cook meals during the week for people who are having trouble getting meals together. So did you want to tell everyone if you're looking for volunteers or donations where they could take that or where they could go?
So we actually start back... So what you're referring to is called our Crossroads Meal and it's actually a combined churches initiative. Thank you, words. And so we actually have our first meal that comes, that starts again on Thursday night. Anyone, it's open to anyone. If you would like to come along to make connection, come along to us. In regards to donations for that, we can, if someone makes contact with us, we can organise to, you know, be where we need to be to do what we need to do. Anyone who wishes to come along and volunteer and help cook, or even just to sit at the table and make connection with those at the table with you, just feel free, just give us a yell and we'll... So it's at the Salvation Army at 43 West Street in Mount Isa. Thursday night, it's on the deck at the back. It's absolutely beautiful. When there's just a little bit of cloud around, the sunset spectacular.
Okay, thank you very much. And here's your cheque. Thank you, Lindy. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now up to item five. Item 5.1, minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 26th of March 2025. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I'll just move that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 26th of March 2025 be confirmed as true and correct record.
Thank you, councillor Crowther. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Attali.
Thanks councillor Attali, all in favour? I think for the purpose of this, isn't it just that we're moving that they're true and correct, not that we followed up? I think that would be actions. Is that right? I didn't know. I didn't... So can we get back just to the meeting and vote on that? Are we all voting that the minutes are actually true and correct? Thank you, Carrie. Sorry, I understand we've had someone come in late wanting to participate in item four. Usually we require written notice. We'll give you a couple of minutes. Yeah? No, it's for recording purposes.
Oh, righto. My name's Scott Sheard, you probably may know me and may not. I'm the beekeeper, bee man. Three weeks ago, I sent you this on an email about varroa mite. Haven't had any replies, so I thought I'd come down and ask. Can we get any help? Like what's our criteria here in Mount Isa with the biosecurity? Varroa mite's, you know, pretty critical. If you're not aware, it's like a flea and it jumps on the back of a bee and eventually it'll kill the hive. There's no cure, there's only treatment. And if you get a lot of the diseases with it, the hive will last three weeks. No food, no bees, no pollination, no food. And that includes beer, no beer because it's barley hops, all needs pollinated. We're in a special place here in Mount Isa. We don't have it yet. New South Wales, they killed something like 30,000 hives and then thought, oh, well, it's out of control now, we'll just let it go. So, you know, I'm hoping we might be able to put a blockage in. I've also written to the premier, Robbie Catter, Bob Catter. And it's, you know, no one really cares, no one's doing anything about it. If we had a block from Camberwell to Longreach to Charterhouse House, something like that, we're talking three roads, massive place in Queensland, that we could just restrict it for bee movement. Now, I don't think that's going to put anyone financially out of pocket because we don't have any farms up this way, so we don't really need pollination. If you want to take a bee hive from New South Wales to the Northern Territory to pollinate some watermelons, well, go around the long way because Adelaide and Victoria and New South Wales already have varroa mite. Why should we get it up here? So putting in some sort of restriction there, whether that's the CEO, whether it's the mayor, whether it's the whole group, whether, you know, something can be done, biosecurity don't really want to know about it. So...
Thank you, Scott. Yeah, I did read your email and thank you for sending it in. And we do take biosecurity seriously. I did send it on to the relevant department to get advice on that, but sorry, yeah, things, other things took precedence and I didn't get back to you, so that's on me. I apologise.
No, no, that's all right. It's a bit like Mount Cow disease, right? Now, we don't have that in Australia. We're one of the only countries that don't have it. Prior to three years ago, we were the only country that didn't have varroa mite. Now we have it. This is the third time I've been here. I think I was here in 2018 when it first, you know, thought it was going to come here and I come and spoke to, I think it's on the record, when Mayor McCulloch was the mayor and then I come a couple of years later when the last mayor was here. And now I'm here today with Mayor McCray, just to ask, you know, what can we do, what can be done? If mad cow turns up and they start shooting cows, how happy are the farmers around here going to be? And then they say, oh, it's out of control. And then we have someone like Gina Reinhardt that loses her cows and she won't care what the legislation is, she'll be digging up what our constitution says.
Okay, so I can reply to a few things there. I was getting advice on behalf of Mount Isa City Council on what we're doing, but I know as part of the North West Rock, there is actually a biosecurity exercise being held in Karamba later in the month, so I can see if they've got bees on the agenda. Other than that, I might set a meeting, if you could make a meeting with our team, to find out what's possible for us as a council.
Yeah, that sounds good, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Who do I see, a fellow over here or...
Yep.
Yes, through the mayor. I rang you about that and asked you to talk to Robbie, but also to get on to the, you know, primary industries and see what they could do. But are you looking for a support letter to go through you or through the council? Is that what you're looking for?
Well, no one's doing anything. And like Brisbane is Brisbane and the Brisbane looks after Brisbane and who cares if Brisbane have got it? We have a chance where we don't have to get it. And we're not just talking about it's not really going to affect us because it really doesn't matter because we don't grow anything. But everything that's pollinated in your garden, your little veggie crop, there'll be no bees here. Because once I get it, like, you know, I'm going to play around and try to do it, but it's just an ongoing battle, the way that there's no rules. Like if I have it and I treat mine and you have it and you don't treat yours, there's no fine for you. It's like just tough titties.
Yes, Scott. I wouldn't necessarily think that no one's doing anything because I think the government is talking about the regions a lot and are putting a lot more resources into DPI. So what I know, in the calendar, in the next couple of weeks, there is actually a DPI stakeholder relations, primary industry stakeholder relations meeting here that you would be able to attend to actually speak to the DPI directly on this issue.
We had biosecurity out here about five weeks ago to the Barclay Motel, Hotel, for a seminar on varroa mite specifically. And I had to pull them up on all the mistakes that were through the videos, so they're not doing much.
From here, all we can offer you today on behalf of the council is to set the meeting with our biosecurity team.
I much appreciate it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now up to item 6.1, outstanding actions from previous council meetings as at 24th of April 2025. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I'll just move that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from previous council meetings as of the 24th of April 2025.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Did anyone have anything to say on that? I did note myself when I went through, there's a few actions that seem to have been cleaned up and they still seem to be on that actions register?
Yeah, we'll do a cleanse. Just on that one that councillor Coghlan raised, that the request was that that be on the next workshop agenda, so we'll put that on the workshop agenda.
Okay, thank you.
We did, the last workshop, we only had a couple of councils here, so we'll put it on the next one.
Okay, thanks. You happy with that councillor Coghlan?
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure it was action.
Okay, all in favour? Carrie? Sorry, we've got the Spanish Inquisition thing going on again today. Item seven, declarations of conflict of interest. I have a conflict to declare for item 12.5, in-kind fees and charges for council-owned facilities. That's to do with our grants and sponsorships round. I'm declaring because I'm on the executive of Zonta here for Mount Isa and as a result of my conflict of interest, I'll leave and stay away from the meeting while this matter is discussed, considered or voted on. Were there any other conflicts for today's meeting? No? That brings us to the Merrill Minute. I would like to start by thanking the team for their work on helping with the logistics for ANZAC Day and the RSL for organising. Once again, there was a terrific turnout by the community and as I have said on the social media platforms, it's the main event of the year where the community comes together in united way and to pay respect to those who have served and continue to serve our country and community. Thanks to councillor Coghlan who went to Camberwell to present on our behalf, or represent, I should say. I understand there were about 100 people in attendance, so it's great to see that the community spirit and respect is alive and well in Camberwell. The last month has been extremely busy with the regional organisation of councils delegation taking place in Brisbane and the resources councils meeting happening the week after. Both of these events were well attended by all councils and getting together as a group and advocating for our region is how we will ultimately get the results we require. The next month will be even busier with North West MPX and the North West Rock, both happening right here in Mount Isa next week. We'll have many visitors here in town, spending nights and generating revenue for our small businesses. North West MPX kicks off next Tuesday night with the evening welcome at event and the section open to the general public is on Thursday for the Jobs Expo and they can also find out more about the exhibitors at the North West MPX. I understand that there will be an official visit by the Assistant Minister for Finance, Trade, Employment and Training, Amanda Stoker MP, present at that event. The CEO and myself will be doing a presentation, why Mount Isa is a smart answer to a critical question. I've also been invited to speak at the Townsville and North Queensland Critical Minerals Forum held on the 27th of May. This is a wonderful opportunity to showcase what Mount Isa has to offer. Our next major event will be the Go Green for Isa Day, which was formerly known as the Free Plants Day. The team did an amazing job last year and I can't wait to see what they come up with next month. That event is funded through the money raised from the environmental levy. I'd also like to move that to accommodate the cuppa with the councillor sessions on council meeting days at 8:30 AM, I would like to move the following motion, that council approve the meeting time to be changed to 9:30 AM for the balance of the ordinary council meetings for the year 2025. Can I get a second for that motion?
Second, Attali.
Thank you councillor Attali, all in favour? That's Carrie. So the intention of that is to move what used to be coupled with the council in the library at around 10:30 to have it here in the morning at Chambers prior to council meetings where the councillors will all be available and prior to a lot of people having to start work for the day. So they'll give them the opportunity, if they've got a burning question they need to talk to us about, to pop in before the council meeting. Okay, item nine, notices of motion, there are nil. Item 10, the executive services report. Do I have a mover for item 10.1, the 2024-2025 annual operation plan, third quarter update?
I'll just move that council receives and accepts the 2024-2025 annual operation plan, third quarter update report.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Thanks councillor Ballard. Would anyone like to speak to that? Yes councillor Ballard?
I think that the update shows that we're tracking quite well on a number of really important initiatives, but also there's also some other equally important work that's fallen into the red. I really hope that that doesn't fall off council's radar and that we're able to shift focus from those projects at the nearing completion on to that work that's fallen behind because, yeah, I think it's really to the benefit of the community that we move our efforts towards those things like trying to get daycare that is suitable for shift work and things like that.
Yep, thank you. Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask with 3.1, we talk about the Asset Management Steering Committee. Can I ask whose members, who the members are of that committee?
Well, in the main, it's most of the directors and different staff that are in that asset management team. And a couple of, a couple of the outside people as well.
Couple of who, outside?
A couple of the outside workers are on that.
Okay. I just wonder if that Asset Management Committee, what assets are being used for and any significant changes to the assets, whether that touches on strategic and whether it would assist in decisions if councillors were on that committee or part of it, seeing as though there's 300 years' worth of experience of what's in Mount Isa. I sometimes see that we're involved or resolutions come to the council after decisions have already been made. And I think that if we need to vote on it, then perhaps we as a council or chambers here needs to have some input into that. Because if the decision needs to be made by us, then if we're involved in it from the start, it may help if people do all this work and it comes to us and we say, no, that's a silly idea and vote it down, then we've just wasted time, money and effort.
Thank you councillor Coghlan. Noted, we'll put that on the agenda for the workshop. Any other comments before we move on? All in favour? Carrie? Do I have a mover for item 10.2, updated policies for adoption?
Yeah, I'll move that council adopts the following strategic policies and frameworks. Number one, fraud and corruption prevention policy, version three. Two, fraud and corruption prevention framework, version three. Three is the water meter policy, version three. And four is the water restriction policy, version two.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Attali.
Thank you councillor Attali. Would anyone like to speak to that?
Just like to say, well done on cleaning up the policies and the...
The track changing.
The track changes.
Now we all know what's going on. Okay, all in favour? Carrie? Do I have a mover for item 10.3, proposed councillor portfolio update?
Yeah, I'll recommend... Recommendation of the council transfer the tourism and events portfolio to the economic development portfolio holder, councillor Travis Crocker. And then the council appoints councillor Travis Crocker as his representative on to the Riversley World Heritage Advisory Committee.
Thank you councillor Attali. Do I have a second for that motion?
Ballard.
Thank you councillor Ballard. I'll probably speak to that if you like. The tourism and events formally sat with councillor Doyle, who also had a massive portfolio with youth and sport and rec. I found it an issue when I had the tourism and events portfolio not being on the Outback at Isa board, it didn't really gel and correlate very well. So now councillor Crowther's chair of the Outback at Isa board, it just seemed to align much better having him with tourism and events. So that was the reason behind that.
You know, through the chair, and I totally agree, I think that portfolio has got suited a lot better with the council.
Yeah, and I know councillor Doyle's already very busy with his youth and sport and rec work. So, yeah, he was quite happy to let that go. Okay, all in favour? Carrie? Okay, item 11, corporate services reports. Do I have a mover for 11.1, finance overview report, March 2025?
I move that council receives and accepts the March 2025 finance overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councillor Crowther, would you like to speak to that councillor Ballard?
Yeah, unfortunately, all the notes that I'd made for these motions failed to save and doxed on tap, so I'm not particularly well prepared, but...
Just a general theme you'd like to share?
Just want to highlight the fact that the acting corporate services director, Glen Hart, he's working really hard, not only with the finance team, but between other departments to try and bring council's budget back into closer alignment with those forecast figures. And there's also a lot of work going on in the background to ensure that we're capturing things that were missed this year to provide a more accurate outlook for next year. So we really appreciate the work that Glen's done. We're hoping that he can continue on with this in an interim role and to are able to fill that position. You know, it's pretty clear that there's a lot of work to be done, but until we get those people in those director roles and they're up to speed, it's probably going to be a little bit, you know, stagnant. We're probably not going to make a lot of progress in the meantime, but certainly appreciative of all the work that's being done there.
Yeah, and I think you make a good point, that we'll have two new directors starting rather shortly and that will make a massive difference to the organisation, having three full-time directors in place. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, yes, when the new directors start, I think we just need to, as a council, we need to direct them on what we want, you know, like not as in making the town a better place and utilising our costings against some of the expenses that have been done in the past.
I guess we just need to get together and put our intentions through our corporate plan and our different documents and then the CEO has to direct the directors on how, you know, how we want things to roll. That has to come through the CEO. Is that right?
Well, we're still allowed to talk to the directors, though.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely. We can't really hold them accountable for anything, though.
Yeah, I know, but we need to, yeah, we just need to do, we need to be doing things a lot better.
We can all agree on that. All in favour? Carrie? Okay, 11.2, Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Overview Report as at 31st of March 2025. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the March 2025 Mount Isa City Council Departmental Business Units Finance Report, Overview Report as presented.
Thank you. Thank you, do I have a second?
Second, Atali.
Thanks councillor Tully.
Again, I'm, I'm short of notes, but it's the, the three large assets that we do fairly granular reporting on being Civic Centre Splashes and Buchanan Park. All of those are operating so close to budget, I think it's a real credit to the people that are overseeing those three entities. So I want to thank them for their efforts. I'd also like to point out that, you know, again, back to the work of Glenn Hart and the finance team, they're providing really granular, very insightful reports. We thank them for the work that they've done and that, you know, the quality of those reports continues to improve as we really refine the things that we want to drill down on, so. But I, I think it's really pleasing to see that those three assets in particular are doing so well.
Yeah, and I think that's some positive confirmation that we did the right thing bringing those things back under council as well.
Hundred per cent.
Yeah, any further commentary?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions with, to do with this part of the meeting. Buchanan Park, I know, I'd like to know how we're going with the caretaker, but our odd areas.
The, the advertisement is closed, I think, I'm just going a little bit off memory, but I think we had about thirty applicants for the role.
I did hear that, yeah.
So there's, there'll be a little time to sort through that, but yeah, it's pretty well advanced.
Okay, the second thing is the heat pumps at splashes, how are we going with the installation of those?
I think it's, I think the planning's underway. They've actually got, I think they've actually got to close the pool while they're doing it, so they're trying to coordinate it so it's a little bit in the quieter times than it is now, so.
Well, I think, yeah, because we are going into our quiet time now because the weather's changed, but we need to get that, the heat pumps in and working so that people can still keep training like a little bit into the winter months. And the flooring at the civic centre?
Yeah, I had a look at the flooring yesterday and it's pretty well, I'm not sure whether there's one more coat, but it's pretty well completed. The, and it looks quite good, like really good. And the guys doing the lifts are onsite as well, so it seems to be progressing pretty well.
Yes, Brian said to me yesterday, there was one more coat for the floor and to pop over and have a look. So if everyone wants to just pop over after the meeting, you could probably just stick your head in and have a look at the floor.
And we're also making sure that we do put it on our work schedule, that it gets a coat every twelve months so that we're not in the same position.
Okay, all in favour? Carried. Item eleven point three, corporate services overview report, February twenty twenty five and March twenty twenty five.
I recommend that council receives and accepts the February twenty twenty five and March twenty twenty five corporate services overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you councillor Coglan, did you want to speak to that?
We can see that there's been a bit of an uptick in the number of touchpoints between the community and council. It's a pretty regular topic for discussion where, you know, as councillors, we want to drive efficiency, trying to streamline that process, make it a better customer experience and really not lose the information that community's providing us, get that feedback to those people that have taken the time to provide that feedback. It's, we've got a long way to go, but, you know, that's not to say that we're not aware that there's a lot of improvements to be made and we're not making concerted efforts to make those touchpoints more pleasing to the community members that are reaching out to us.
Yeah, thank you, and as we discussed during the briefing, I think having those new directors in place will make, help us make a lot of difference there as well. Anyone else? All in favour? Carried. Item eleven point four, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six revenue policy.
I'd like to recommend that council adopts the financial year twenty twenty five, twenty six revenue policy as presented.
Thank you councillor Ballard, a second please.
Second.
Thanks councillor Crowther.
It's just an update of the policy.
Okay, thank you. All in favour? Carried. Okay, item twelve point one, development and land use quarter three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five overview report.
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the development and land use quarter three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor Coglan, do I have a second for the motion?
Ballard.
Councillor Ballard, thank you, any comments?
No.
Nothing there, okay, all in favour? Carried. Item twelve point two, Fulton Hogan licence renewal, do I have a mover?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that council receives, resolves to, one, enter into a new licence agreement with Fulton Hogan over part of council freehold land described as lot sixty six on SP two one four nine one six for a three-year term on a one plus one plus one year basis with all costs associated with the renewal to be paid for by Fulton Hogan. And two, all operations within the licensed area shall comply with the conditions of council's negotiated decision notice for a material change of use for an asphalt plant. And three, environmentally relevant activity six dated sixteenth of August two thousand and sixteen. And the licensee shall obtain the necessary building approvals, including undertaking successful final inspections for all structures within the license area and delegate, 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 sorry, to the chief executive officer the authority to finalize all matters in relation to the licence agreement and rehabilitate lot sixty six on SP two one four nine one six with the rent money received from the licence agreement.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second, Atali.
Thanks councillor Tully, I actually, I actually have a question for that one and probably would have preferred this to be in confidential, but, I mean, it's all here in the report. I'm just wondering, like usually on, like lots of commercial leases I've seen before, the, the tenant pays the outgoings. Is there, I know they pay a connection, but is there rates attached to that or is that because we own, own the land? There's no rates attached to it or what's the story with that?
I'll need to take the detail on notice, my understanding is we don't charge rates to the parcel because we own it. And the other outgoings they pay, so they've run power and water.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Have we got any, through the chair, have we got an insurance on that block of land as well?
They, they carry insurance.
Yep, and that's been, we've, we've seen that? Yep.
Any further questions?
No, no, I just, just wanted to say like Fulton Hogan already occupied that land, so it's just a continuation of, of what they're already doing. And for those people who aren't aware, it's the old abattoir area that we're, we're talking about. And council's doing some good work trying to find a customer to, to use the rest of that area.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All in favour? Carried. Item twelve point three, regulatory services report, January to March twenty twenty five.
Like to recommend that council receives and accepts the regulatory services report, January to March twenty twenty five as presented.
Thank you councillor Coglan, do I have a second?
Second, a deputy.
Thank you councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on that, anybody?
I, I just wanted to, like, just mention the feral cats, and we spoke about it at the workshop and, and I think you'd agreed to take it up with the rock because we, we know that we can put a million dollars into it here and if people around us aren't doing it, it's, they're just going to come in, so really need to bump it up to a national. The federal government needs to do something, I mean, we're an island, so if we can eradicate them, they can't come in from somewhere else. So if we start with the rock and we just keep pushing ahead from there.
I think too, the same is what I just said to Bluey before, I think we've got an ideal opportunity when the DPI comes to town in the next couple of weeks too, to speak to them about that.
Can I just ask about, have we got any further as a council with the rain trees? Like trying to get more money to eradicate the rain trees that are clogging up our waterway? I think the first part was we're going to try and get them on the, the list because they're not actually on the problem list.
So through to the chair, the, there's a question on notice for the workshop, which will be the presentation of the report on how we're going to manage the cleanup of the lyka and the catchment. The leucina in particular, once it's removed and as everyone has seen from around town, it propagates really quickly. That seed load carries for eight years. And so there's a program that works where we take out a tree that we drop a GPS point and that then goes on the maintenance program for annual spraying. In terms of managing leucina, it's listed under our local laws as a problematic species. It's not listed at a state level as a noxious weed because it's used as a cattle feed, so there's, there's benefits to it. But it is problematic when it comes to our waterways. So the, the funding that council has received through disaster recovery will go through and clean up the lyka and then work through the, the creeks to make sure that we capture as much as we can. And that way we're not reworking it because if we miss a whole stand of trees in one of the creeks, those seeds will eventually wash down to the river and then make the problem worse.
I just wanted to make sure we were still going ahead with everything. Thank you.
Thanks, okay, all in favour? Carried. Item twelve point four, library services report, January to March twenty twenty five.
I'd like to recommend that council receives and accepts the library services report, January to March two thousand and twenty five as presented.
Thank you councillor Coglan, do I have a second?
Ballard.
Thanks councillor Ballard, would you like to speak to that deputy mayor?
Just a few things, we're still doing, they're still doing a lot of holiday activities, holidays just gone. The first five forever rhyme time and storytime sessions. Community members are more than welcome to use the computers, the wifi and physical and digital library. I would just like to ask a question there, I went in there the other day and the historical room there, I would like to know, is someone responsible, responsible for that on their own? Have we got a specific person? Because I don't think the room is being used for what it should be, being used.
Happy to have a, a conversation about the, the operations of it offline. I think it's probably the best approach.
Okay, thank you.
Well, through the chair, while we're in the library, how'd we go with the computers with that concern through the?
Oh, with the printers?
Yeah, how, how, how does that track along?
Through the chair, so we've had a conversation with the supplier and the gremlins we're experiencing have been settled for now. There's some contractual requirements that I'm negotiating with that supplier and to make sure the level of service that our community receives is what we expect it to be.
Thank you director King, and also to do with the library, I did hear that in the next, I think, month or so, the state library will be coming out and doing some first five forever training as well. So that'll be really exciting for our community and I look forward to, to touching base with them again as well. So all in favour with that, of that? Carried. Item twelve point five, community grants and sponsorship round two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. I'll hand over to the deputy mayor and leave you with that one.
Have I got a mover for twelve point five?
Yeah, I'll move that the council approved the following organizations to receive round two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five community grants and sponsorships. Happy Valley Community Kindergarten, purchase installation of a cubby house, five thousand. Mount Isa Go Kart Club, upgrade safety signs, two thousand one hundred and thirty six. Town View State School, P and C, purchase outdoor screen projector and barbecue, four thousand nine hundred and forty five. Sicaroon Martial Arts, purchase and install new air conditioning, ducting and flashing, five thousand. Copper City Tennis Club, on behalf of Pickleball Mount Isa, purchase of pickleball startup kits, three thousand three hundred. Estel Cardiff Community Kindergarten, purchase and install new signees, three thousand eight hundred and fifteen. Mount Isa Pistol Club, replace amenities, flooring, four thousand seven hundred and fifty. Injilenge Community Kindergarten, purchase and install shade structure, five thousand. The Isa Ski Club, Ski and Power Boat Club, Inc., install mural onsite of forty foot container, five thousand. That's a total of thirty eight thousand nine hundred and forty six. And then we've got sponsorship organizations. Mount Isa Camp Draft Association, Inc., Mount Isa Camp Draft, ten thousand. Camo Wheel Camp Draft Association, Inc., Camwell Camp Draft and Rodeo, five thousand. Mount Isa Still, Estedford Association, Inc., Mount Isa Estedford, eleven thousand five hundred and twenty four. Commerce North West, Northern Outback Business Awards, eight thousand. Good Shepherd Parish Multicultural Festival, six thousand eight hundred and fifty two. Mount Isa Filipino Australia Association, Inc., Philippines Independence Day Fiesta, three thousand four hundred and tens. Zonta Club of Mount Isa, rodeo ball and district twenty two conference, five thousand eight hundred and thirteen. And Apex Club, Mount Isa, rock pop mime show, eight thousand. Mount Isa State School, State Special School, on behalf of Julie Hannaford Rodeo Queen, Great North West Family Fund Day, three thousand. Total of six one thousand five hundred and ninety nine. And, and that the council waived the following fees and charges for venue and equipment hire of council-owned facilities. Mount Isa Estedford Association, Inc., Mount Isa Estedford, six thousand seven hundred and twenty four, ah, six thousand two hundred and twenty four, sorry. Mount Isa Filipino Australia Association, Philippines Independence Day Fiesta, one thousand five hundred and eighty nine dollars fifty. Zonta Club of Mount Isa, rodeo ball and district twenty two conference, four thousand one hundred and eighty seven, seventy. Total twelve thousand and fifty one dollars, twenty cents.
I'll second it if you want, I'll take the easy bit.
You don't have to say anything.
What are you seconding, yeah?
Right, yeah, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, I just think it's pleasing to see such a wide range of activities being sponsored and funded and grants. It's, it's really good to see so many different types of activities for our people and our community to be involved in and to get around. So that's really pleasing, it shows a lot of positivity going forward.
I'd like to talk to it as well, please.
Yeah.
Were you going to talk to it, Travis?
No, you're right.
Councillor Ballard?
Just wanted to say that we're about to enter, you know, that time of year when the harvest really comes alive and I personally am really proud to be a, a part of the council that supports these groups that are undertaking a lot of voluntary work, eating into limited amount of their own time, you know, to, and they really contribute a lot to the social fabric of our community. So I think there's a lot of really worthy recipients of support there and I'd, I'd like to wish them all the very best for that event.
I'd just like to take this opportunity, I know we have the community grants, so we also have the Rad of Funding and I see here like install a mural on the side of a forty foot container. People in community groups and that in town need to know a little bit more about the Rad of Funding, that they can like put murals on their facilities or whatever, so it is something that they can look into.
I just wanted, oh, sorry Travis, I just wanted to echo John and Dan and thoughts that although that's our community there, those organizations and anything that brings people together, that, that creates a sense of community. So I encourage, you know, sporting bodies and associations to, to get in contact with the people responsible for these, these grants to help them out because the stronger we have these, these community associations and that, the stronger our community is.
Councillor Tully?
No, I just agree with everyone, what everyone's saying with that, without these, people doing it for, for, most of them are doing it for nothing. So like that's a big, a big thank you to all of them because the more, more of these grants go out into these organizations means we can encourage more people to come to town as well.
Exactly. Livability. All those in favour? Carried.
Can we, can we tell the mayor that we refuse the zontipark?
Don't make a day any worse. You didn't get what you wanted. All right, on to twelve point six, I'll hand back over to madam mayor.
Okay, do I have a move for twelve point six, mine workers memorial advisory committee?
I shall move that council formally acknowledge the works completed by the Mine Workers Memorial Advisory Committee and that council allows for the cessation of the committee as the committee objective has been met.
Thank you, do I have a second for that motion?
Coglan.
Right it.
Councillor Coglan, um, thank you, second up, would anyone like to speak to that?
I'd just like to give a little bit of an overview and I will read just so that I don't get anything wrong. Council has been working collaboratively with the Mine Workers Memorial Advisory Committee on the associated works with the design development of a miner's memorial for Mount Isa, which has been something that a lot of people have wanted for a long, long Isa, which has been something that a lot of people have wanted for a long, long time. The mine workers memorial advisory committee was initiated in late two thousand and twenty one and the committee was formed through an E O I process that attracted much community interest. The function of the advisory committee was to make recommendations to council on the preferred location and design works for the memorial. The governing of the committee was under the leadership of a committee elected representative, Tony McGrady. The term of the advisory committee is three years from fifteenth of September twenty twenty one. The timeframe has now lapsed. A terms of reference was completed and adopted by council, which is attached if anyone wants to read it. Council completed a procurement process and appointed C A architects to complete concept and design works for the memorial. C A Architects worked under the guidance of council and the committee experience and knowledge to develop the design works. Works completed included, council approval of preferred site, G E O tech investigation of site, cost estimate, alternative R V parking plan, Frank Aston Hill master plan, miner's memorial concept and design. These documents are available upon a request and have been previously presented to council. All works that were expected of the committee have now been valued and delivered. These works have now been completed and review of the committee's continued works has been completed. The completion of the committee's work allows for the disbandment of the committee due to the success they have achieved during their time. Just gives everyone's an overview of how, how it all worked. And I would like to say a thank you to all those people that did give up their time. A lot of people flew at their own expense to Mount Isa to make sure that this come, you know, went forward. So it's a big thank you to them.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everyone on the committee and congratulate those that are on council and the committee for getting this project to this far because there were a lot of hurdles involved. There were a lot of stakeholders, a lot of opinions, a lot of politics at play and the site was difficult site as well. So, yeah, I think it turned out and everyone's happy with the result and by standing this committee down, it doesn't mean that this is off our agenda or not seen as a priority. It means council's got it to the stage, had it shovel ready and ready to go and we're now looking for funding. So there's no, I guess, point in everyone flying here or meeting regularly when basically the update is going to be, we're still looking for funding until, until something is secured. Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. Okay, item twelve point seven, Radif round three. Do I have a mover for that motion?
Yeah, I recommend that council endorse the Regional Arts Development Fund Committee recommendation to award round three funding to Northwest Gymnastics Mount Isa, Inc., to the amount of two and a half thousand dollars, including GST, for their project Flipside Circus Residency Workshop.
Thank you, Council Doyle. Do I have a second for that?
Second to Tully.
Thanks, Council Tully.
Can I, can I just ask, and I'm not against, I'm not against this, okay?
That's what I'm gonna ask.
But people are flying here to do something, so we're paying them and I thought we had conversation around, around that, around paying people to come here and then they'd leave.
No, it's still gonna actually bring in, bring a service this one. They're not just doing a thing, so they're gonna be doing training, training the trainers as well in the full report. So it's sort of not just come up and participate, it's actually to sort of then provide a bit extra training. So it's sort of just met into that criteria again. So it was better than what previous ones were. They were just coming up teaching so people how to just, you know, make something and then leave. They're actually then training the staff that they have there to then, to then follow on with that training as well.
And I think in the past too, one of the issues, issues where we were paying the expenses of people to come here and then they were charging people to actually go to the workshops and running it like their small business as well. So when we looked at this one, one of the things I specified was that it was not just for that one club, it's open to the broader community. And if you have a look here, it says the workshop for various age groups, including kindy, primary school teens, adults, and it's open to the wider community. So everyone can come along and take advantage of that.
Through the chair, I got one of my staff that are involved with this and they said it's, it's great because they're actually teaching them, they're actually teaching the coaches.
Yeah.
So that's why I was sort of.
Yeah, I think it's capacity building for the whole community. So that's why we've jumped on this one and supported it.
And just backing up what the deputy mayor said, like, you know, when we looked at some of those previous funding that we just approved through council, there would have been a great opportunity there for them to sort of really, it would have been well in line with the Radif funding. So not that it's, I'm not knocking this one, but it's just again, trying to get people to really look at all the other opportunities out there and this Radif does, we still struggle to get sort of some applications so that sort of, and it's not from lack of trying as well, like they're trying the new avenues, but just, I don't know what more we can really do, but like there is some, like it's not a big deal of funding there, but it's still, there is money available that we seem to be just trying to, trying to give away and we just can't give away. So the more applications we can get in and we've streamlined it with the online version now and there's still a manual version that people can do, but the online version's quite sort of user friendly to, once they've sort of got their first initial login, I think that was probably the hardest part was that initial login. But once they've done that, the application process, it's sort of just, it sort of prompts you what to put in there, it helps out. So it's sort of, it will be a lot easier process going forward for them.
Is there an opportunity for council to, you know, assess when applications come to us that would fit within the criteria for Radif to go, hey, look, you know, maybe you should look at this as well?
Yeah, that would probably more come when they're actually putting in the applications to the staff. It'd probably be a discussion with Tim and then with the guys that actually receive all the funding requests and that sort of stuff because we really only see it by the time, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I can't see why not. I mean, they can sort of say, well, this would be really good for Radif as well. So then they could apply, it probably just comes in depending funding rounds when they're available and that, when they decide to do it and when that person's available to do that work as well. So, so now we accepted a late application for Radif as well, just because this was sort of a bit rushed in as well, just because if they didn't get it approved into this one, then they would have fallen outside the guidelines. So then they wouldn't have been eligible and then that was.
Council Crowther, I think what, what you're saying too is the more people that apply and get the funding, then it's spoken about more often in the community.
Yeah, exactly.
And I mean, what's coming through now is a lot different than has been previously. So the word must be getting out to people that it is.
Exactly, yeah.
What sort, what sort of funding it is, which is good.
And I guess the benefit too for, for council is if no one takes this up, we can, we can pull that money and then use it for art projects within the community too, for the CBD and where we need, yeah, I guess like other cities where they have, you know, sculptures and different things to improve the amenity of the city too.
Through, through the chair, have we got a register of all the organizations through Mount Isa?
Yes, we have.
Is there any, like, when these grants come up, is there a way of, of someone in the council sort of just not tapping them on the shoulder?
They all get a, oh, sorry, through the chair. They all, only because I'm involved in one of, like a community organization, you get emails out to, to say what, what's coming up, what's available, yes.
Yep.
They do, they do send that out. But I do believe we could do it, we could do it better with the, the paper and with our social media.
Yeah.
Yeah. Not just an email.
I just, and emails, emails are good, but I think they're, they're the end result. I don't think they're the start of the, start of the problem. Like a phone, like I'd say to my staff all the time, a phone call and then an email after, not an email and a phone call, you know, because an email, once they read it, sometimes delete and forget, but a phone call's a conversation they normally don't forget.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have the capacity though to ring all of the organizations each time a round opens though. I think they'd have to take some responsibility to like look on socials or check the paper or check their emails.
I just think we could do more on social media.
Intensive ringing everybody, there's no way we could do that, there's so many.
We did use to, we did do that.
How many organizations are you talking though?
I think there's about fifty something.
But fifty not a big, I mean.
The other thing, the other thing we could do that we did do in, in previous councils is when the grant was coming up, we had an open session for people to come in and see what was available, but it wasn't just what was available with Mount Isa City Council. I remember I got Glencore involved, the Queensland Country Credit Union, one of the other banks as well, and we've got Hallie Wilson from State Development to come in. So we could do something like that again, which proved really, really popular.
Yeah, we've got some plans in that space, so we might just carry that one over to the workshop and have a general discussion then.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think that's one area we're actually sort of not doing real well, I think, compared to what, you know, the availability of money that's out there that the people are actually looking for. So I think we probably shouldn't have been.
Just quickly on that, just someone that's a one man show myself and that volunteers throughout the community schools and everything, it's, it's very hard when you, you only get two hours a day to yourself and then you try and spend that with your kids and then to try and remember there's a grant coming up and then there's a funding coming up and then there's something else and then next thing you know, you miss it. So, yeah, go to the workshop, but the more we can do on that, the better.
Yeah, I think so, definitely.
Okay, thank you. So I think we're back up to voting for that, are we? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, do I have a mover for thirteen point one, major projects overview report, February twenty twenty five?
Recommendation to the council receiving note in March two thousand and twenty five, major projects overview report.
Thank you. Do I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Thank you, Council Crowther. Any comments from anybody?
Just, I think Trav just said the civics, the lifts, completed then, oh, no, no.
That's at Outback at Isa.
On site, okay. Oh, sorry.
Completed one was Outback at Isa.
Okay, yeah, that's good.
Can, can I just, Tim, the, the kitchens, is that gonna be like that's in?
So we got, did some quote, we did some quotes. So there's two kitchens, there's one at the, one at the civic center and one at the entertainment center. So two different ways of doing it. So we're currently getting options for containerized kitchens at the entertainment center. So that could be something that could be used, you know, in conjunction with other clubs that are in that area. And the other one, we got quotes for the, the kitchen that were well over the budget. So we're de-scoping that and then we'll, once we de-scope that, we'll put it back out to market.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor? Carrie. Item thirteen point two, tender report, twenty twenty four to thirty six, Mount Isa City Council, Tharapatha Way Stormwater Asset Renewal Upgrades.
A recommend, recommendation that the council award the contract two thousand twenty, two, two oh, two four to two, to thirty six, Mount Isa City Council, Tharapatha Way Stormwater Access Renewal Upgrades to Black Form Concrete Contracting Project Limit to the Value of seven hundred and ninety six thousand, seven hundred and twenty two dollars seventy nine, excluding GST. Delegate the authority to the chief, to CEO to negotiate, finalize and enter into this contract and increase the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five capital budget for the N O I D S construction by a hundred and thirty thousand to enable the delivery of the Tharapatha Way culvert widening and continuity.
Thank you. Do I have a second at all?
Seconded, Coglan.
Thank you. Any comments for that one? So that's basically just replacing the culverts along Tharapatha Way to enable to maintenance for that path, to upgrade the path. Which is really well used by the community every week. I think they were saying at park run over December, January, I don't know why, it would have been so hot, they were getting about a hundred, a hundred and fifteen people along there every Saturday. So, yeah, that's really great utilization and from last October when we're doing all those kilometers and we'd go there on an afternoon and see lots of the community walking along there. So it is a well used, used asset.
Yeah, no, it's definitely well used.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carrie. Oh, now also, while we're still in infrastructure services reports, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank our director, Stephen Jewell. He joined us here in council in January twenty twenty one as the manager of Water and Sewage and helped us out with some water, water issues that we had at the time. And then has since been promoted to director of infrastructure in November twenty twenty two. So it's, Director Jewell, it's your last week with us this week, is that correct? Last day today. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for your service. Do you have any words for us at all? It looks like you're getting past a microphone.
You might be disappointed if you're expecting great sage advice, but it's been a very interesting time. Every, every organization has its ups and downs, whether it's with personnel or whether it's funding or whatever. And it just so happened in late twenty twenty, it was having a bit of a, a down in terms of the water supply and problems with the regulator and all that. And I came up here for a three month contract. I decided to take on the permanent role because it was interesting. There's a saying that pilots make their name in storms and tempests, not calm seas. So had it been a fairly easy run, I don't think I would have been interested, but it was, it was lots of ins and outs and difficulties and, yeah, so I stayed on to tackle those. Not everything is fixed, some things take forever, some things never get fixed, but I bought a house up here because I was enjoying it. Still don't mind Mount Isa and don't mind council, but we all have a use by date and we, we need to move on. So that time for me is now.
Thank you, Director Jewell. Those that have been here along that right time, I guess, can attest to the fact that it has definitely been a wild ride. We've definitely seen some things, but thank you for your service. Okay, item fourteen, general business. Council Ballard?
Yep, sure. It's, as I mentioned earlier, we're approaching that time of the year where the Northwest really comes alive with a lot of events and, you know, but I think the beauty of our landscape is on full display, particularly with the really generous late wet season. Everything's looking great. So, you know, I'd like to congratulate Mark Thompson and, and his supporting committee on the Great Northern Rodeo Series that they held earlier in the month. I thought that was a great success. The car park was chock a block and I think it's a great credit to, to Mark and his, his committee of helpers that it was so well supported. Gives me a lot of hope that come August, you know, we're going to see a new chapter come for the Mount Isa rodeo and it couldn't be in better hands in my opinion. The Anzac Day service, you know, was really well supported again. It's one of the most touching things that I get to participate in each year. The weather's beautiful and to see the sun just beginning to crack as the last stands played from the balcony of the civic center. If, if that doesn't move you, then I, you know, not much will. It's great to see the development on Marion Street going along full steam ahead. I think, you know, we can focus on some of the bad news stories around the place, but if we pause and take stock of the amount of money that's been invested in our town over the last couple of years, there's some really good markers that we've got a healthy future ahead of us. And, and while the future definitely looks different to the past, I think that Mount Isa has a lot to look forward to. Yeah, that's about me.
Please, Council Ballard, Council Doyle?
Yeah, I just wanted to talk about those grants and stuff. It's good to see, like we talked about before, Council Coglan, that so many different variety of activities, events and people getting some money in that to actually create some activity and time for our community and our kids and our youth and so on. It's, it's important that we create and enable environments of positivity. And I always say every time I do something with kids, don't create or enable an environment, you wouldn't put your own kid in. So if you, if you know it's a, it's a horrible environment, change it and create a positive one. So just being a volunteer in the community for a long time now, it's really good now. See a lot of positivity coming through and a lot of programs starting to get the right idea of creating those environments. And remember, some of these kids need friends, but also some of them don't need friends, they need mentors and, and role models, people to help teach them responsibility and respect and stuff. So it's starting to come that way now and I'm, and I'm really proud of our community for, for getting on board and supporting our, our people. So, yeah.
Thanks, Council Doyle. Council Crowther?
Yeah, just quickly, I didn't get to attend the Anzac Day session here, but I was fortunate enough to be up in the Gregory Downs and just to give a shout out to the team that sort of held that service up there. I think there was over seventy people there. And again, like Dan mentioned, with the sun coming up as they're playing the last post on violin, which was a different rendition, but it was still extremely moving. Good to see that like the spirit's not just sort of alive in, in just one place, it's all over the country. And I think even the youth that's coming through, you're seeing more and more youth coming in to sort of really acknowledge those, the services of those men and women. Also, just as Council Tully mentioned, we've got the lift running now up at Outback at Isa. So for those people that want to get up and see.
Um, also, just as councillor Tully mentioned, um, we've got the lift running now up at, um, our back at Isa, so for those people that want to get up and see the, um, upstairs displays, that's always up there, I think there's a, um, some paintings and all that there now, so if people want to go there, they can actually, um, use that lift and go upstairs without having to worry about the stairs, which is great, finally. I don't think it's been operating for about six to seven years, so to have that up and running and for fairly cheap in the end, which was great, we sort of utilise the same guys that we did the, that are doing the work on, um, Civic Centre, so that was good to see. And as mentioned, um, North West MPX, obviously, uh, for all the businesses in town, it's a great opportunity to hear what's happening around the city and, in the region, um, to make sure that they get down there and sort of participate where they can, um, especially with the Regional Jobs Expo as well, we'll get aligned in with it, we'll, um, see some good things happening and sort of some opportunity for the, for the youth as well, for getting to those mining and sort of other regional jobs.
Thanks councillor Crowther, councillor Tully.
Um, yeah, just, um, we, um, myself and Pete, um, attended both, um, both, uh, the, the dawn service and the, um, ten o'clock service, and they were both, um, unbelievable to see the kids all marching, I thought they were exceptionally, um, well-presented with their numbers, um, come from all the schools. I'd also like a big thank you to the trumpet player who's, um, who's done, done a great job for, you know, for such a long time.
Keith Cox.
Um, Keith Cox, and I'd just like to thank him for the, for the, um, for what he's done, for, for the, um, for the ceremony over the years and, and the best of luck in, in his future goings. Um, the other thing I'd like to talk about is, um, I think we just got to keep our foot on the, um, fire breaks again, because, I mean, um, this year is going to be exceptional, um, fire breaks again, so as soon as it dries out, um, I've always said the ANZAC Day is your day, and I think we've got to really keep our foot on, and I just wait till the fire, first fire turns up, because I, um, you know, it could be a lot worse than what people think it's gonna happen. And the final thing is, um, I'd love to see the, um, beds in the, you know, I've been talking about it for twelve months now, the beds, um, in the, in the CBD, I've still got nothing in them, and I'd just like to, to see something happening there going forward, it's been a long time. You know, just to get natives in there is better than having nothing in there, so, um, I'd love to see, you know, I've talked about it for twelve months, and I'd love to see that happen.
Yeah, good planting time, I think this is the time of the year to plant, so, yeah, good point. Um, councillor Coglan?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank and congratulate the Camberwell community for their dawn service, um, there was a hundred people turned up, it was, it was just really, it was excellent to be there. And while it was a short service, it just highlighted there's a great community spirit there, um, and I encourage any of the people at Camberwell to contact councillors, um, if you need help and assistance with events, and good luck with the camp draft next month, um, they were preparing when I was out there, um, for that event. And I know it's not within our boundary, but the Gregory is on this weekend, and it brings a lot of people to Mount Isa, um, and there's a lot of canoes around the place, because it hasn't been held for the last two years, um, but it's certainly an event that's known throughout Australia within the community, uh, canoe community, um, and a lot of Mount Isa people will go up there for the weekend, so, um, wish them all the best with that, and the Estedford, I think, is coming up, um, next, next week, I think, so run by volunteers and, and just a fantastic event for showcasing the talent we've got in this town. And St Kieran's Fete will also be on before we, um, before we have our next meeting, so, uh, wish St Kieran's all the best for their fete, I think there's only two schools that have fates now. Uh, it used to be every school, but, you know, volunteers just can't do it, so get out and support it. Um, and of course, the Mother's Day race is coming up too, so I believe they've, um, got a very special emcee for the event, so could be, uh, well worth your money.
That's you, is it councillor Coglan?
No, not me. There's another one sitting in this, uh, room with the same name.
So we're gonna hear in other words, we'll know what's going on.
Are they gonna have that cover for the microphone?
Okay, deputy mayor?
No, I'm all good, I just would like, um, I hope everyone stays safe, um, this weekend with the, with the race on the Gregory, that's all.
And driving to and from. Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, I'd now like to move to item fifteen, consideration for confidential business items. Um, the recommendation is that council considers the confidential reports listed below in a meeting close to the public in accordance with section two hundred and fifty four J of the Local Government Regulation twenty twelve. Um, fifteen point one, microfinance overview report, March twenty twenty five. This matter is considered confid, con, considered to be confidential under section two, two hundred and fifty four J G of the Local Government Regulation, and the council is satisfied that discussion of this matter in an open meeting would on balance be contrary to the public interest as it deals with negotiations relating to a commercial matter involving the local government for which a public discussion would be, would be likely to prejudice the interests of the local government. Um. Do I have a mover for that? Oh, I'm moving it, do I have a seconder?
Seconded.
All in favour? There's no one in here, live stream's off? Council to open, do I have a seconder for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, deputy mayor, all in favour? Okay. All good, Lindsay? All good? Um, do I have a mover for fifteen point one, microfinance overview report, March twenty twenty five?
I'll just move that council receives and accepts the March twenty twenty five microfinance overview report as presented.
Do I have a second?
Seconded, Tully.
Thank you councillor Tully, all in favour? Carrie. There being no further agenda items, the time is now, um, twenty-four minutes past ten, and I declare this ordinary meeting.